Good evening, folks. It's now 6:00 P.M. and the regular session of the Lancaster Planning Commission is now in session. The invocation this evening will be offered by Pastor John Metters of Christian Life Assembly, and then if you'll remain standing, the pledge then will be offered by Vice Chair Smith. Please stand.
Let's pray. Lord Jesus, we thank you for today. Thank you for this meeting tonight. I pray that you would guide the planning commissioners, give them wisdom, and, Father, help good decisions to be made that would bless our city, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you, sir.
Please place your right hand over your heart and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Larry Burkey.
Here.
Cassandra Harvey.
Here.
Dana Hickock.
Here.
Dan Jacobs.
Here.
Vice Chair Sandy Smith.
Here.
Chairman James Vos.
Here.
Commissioner Raj Molly, absent. We have a quorum.
I heard from Mr. Molly this morning. He's ill with the flu or the cold. Anyway, we wish him well, and we'll try to make the right decisions without him. How's that? Public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of ten minutes is provided at this time, during which input may be given regarding agenda items. Individual speakers would be then limited to two minutes each. Do we have any early speakers, Mr. Ludicki?
None that have indicated, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Then, any person who would like to address the planning commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary and identify the agenda item you would like to discuss. Each person will be given an opportunity to address the commission at the time the item is discussed by the commission. Speaker cards are available to rear the council chambers. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each when we call upon you. On the consent calendar of this evening, we have approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 19th, 2009. And I'd like to say before the motion is offered that at that meeting, Reverend Maxine Schultz of the Revealing Truth Church offered the invocation. I neglected to introduce her by her title as Reverend, to which I apologize. All right? You have a motion, please, on the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes from October 19th, 2009, Lancaster Planning Commission meeting.
Sorry, second.
All right. And I've been informed by our recording secretary that we're obliged to vote manually this evening. Is that how you'd like us to do it? All right. So all in favor then signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no. All right. Unanimous then. The next item is a continued public hearing on tentative tract map number 67591. And we have the staff before us. Since this is a continued -- the public hearing is open, and do we have -- it's an uncontested, however. Do we have any speaker cards on this matter?
I have no cards on this matter, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then. Since there are no one -- there is no one who wishes to speak on this matter, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing without objection, and consider a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution number 0929, approving tentative tract map number 67591.
I second the motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. That's unanimous, six oh. The next item is a new public hearing, or new public hearings, I should say. The first one is a one-year extension of conditional use permit 0915. The public hearing is open on this matter. Do we have speakers on this item?
I have one speaker's card, Mr. Chairman, but I believe it is a representative of the applicant.
All right. Is that the case? What's the name on it?
Barbara Schultz.
Are you representative of the applicant?
Yes.
All right. I'll call on you in a minute, then. Thank you. This is an uncontested item, I believe. So does anyone care to hear the staff report on this? No? All right, then. It's appropriate to close the -- well, let me ask the speaker if they wish to address the commission, then. Do you care to make any comments to us?
Not really.
All right. Thank you. Then, without objection, the public hearing is closed, and we'll consider a motion on the one-year extension of conditional use permit 0519.
I make a motion that we grant the one-year extension to October 16th, 2010, based on the findings contained in the staff report, and subject to added condition numbers 17 through 20, and all other previously approved conditions.
I'll second.
Excuse me. I think the recommendation is not correct.
Big pardon?
The recommendation should state, "Subject to modified condition number three and added condition numbers 22 through 23 and all previously approved conditions."
Twenty-two, twenty, and twenty-three.
Instead of 17 through 21. Right.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Sylvia.
Second, the amended motion.
All right. Thank you. So are we clear, then, that modification changes the numerical sequence of the conditions and the added conditions? And the speaker -- excuse me. And the applicant has accepted those, Ms. Donovan?
I did not quite understand that.
All right, then. If that being the case, we'll reopen the public hearing, and we'll be happy to hear your testimony if you'd like to come up and --
I just didn't understand.
If you'd like to come up and introduce yourself for the record, so we can know who you are.
My name is Barbara Schultz. I just didn't understand what she said.
All right. All right, Ms. Schultz. We'll see if we can clarify that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can have your seat. Go ahead, Ms. Donovan.
Okay. Did you want me to just clarify the conditions?
Yes.
All right. We're basically modifying number condition -- condition number three. And do you have the latest staff report?
I have it.
Okay. So basically, we're modifying condition number three to read as it states on the second page, "For the direction of the Director of Public Works, construct a raised landscape median in 20th Street West, limiting to right turns in and out of the site. The final design of the median shall be, as shown on the approved site plan for CUP 0711. The developer shall make a cash deposit for the cost of constructing the median in lieu of constructing the median." So previously, we're asking you to construct the median. Now, we're asking for cash deposit.
Okay.
And then, there's some other conditions? Did you want me to go with this? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Is everyone clear, then, members? All right. Any further discussion or comment? Public hearing is closed. We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution as amended. Excuse me. Adopt the one-year extension as amended. Oops. I forgot. We don't -- we're not electronic. Interesting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous in favor. Next item. This is a new public hearing on conditional use permit number 0906, which is an application by Insight Development for a convenience market for the sale of beer and wine. So without objection, the public hearing is open, and we have speakers on this item?
Uh...
We do. Could we have a staff report, then, please?
Yes, we do have one speaker.
Could we have a staff report on it, even though it's -- even though the applicant says it's uncontested? Since we've had some modifications to the original staff report, could you please give us a staff report?
Yes. I'll give you a brief rundown on it, Mr. Chairman. The request, as you indicated, has been amended. It was originally for a general off-sale license, type 21. That has been amended in the request for off-sale beer and wine, only type 20 license instead of a type 21. This particular site and use is located -- or proposed use is at the northeast corner of Jackman Street and 10th Street West. It is in the ground floor of the mixed-use building that was approved on the site back in 2004. The use as proposed qualifies under the city zoning code as a convenience market, and it is defined as a convenience market primarily by the fact that, as proposed, at least 10% of its floor area would be devoted to the sale of fresh meat and produce. Under the city's ordinance, a minimum of 10% is required. It is also, as defined in the city zoning code, under the alcohol section, an incidental cellar, a proposed incidental cellar of alcohol, because its total sales floor area is less than 10% of the total floor area of the proposed use. As indicated on the revised site plan, which has been distributed to you, the floor plan indicates about 9% or 144 square feet of the sales floor area being used for sale and display of alcoholic beverages. There are a number of issues on this particular site that staff has recommended conditions for. First of all, given the fact that it is a mixed-use project, that means that residential uses are located both above it and in proximity to it. Therefore, although the hours of operation of the convenience market itself are requested from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., we have recommended that deliveries be restricted to only the hours between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. Further, contained within the conditions -- recommended conditions of approval is a restriction on the hours of the sale of alcohol, that those could only occur between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., rather than the entire time that the use is proposed to be open. The applicant has indicated to us that the primary goal of this use is to provide for a convenience shopping location primarily for the senior residents that are located not only in this project, which is a senior restricted project, but also for the revamped Essex House facility on the south side of Jackman, where there are also senior residents. As you are aware, there were formerly two grocery stores in the past within this immediate area, a Safeway some years ago up at 10th and I, and a Viata Market. Both of those uses have vacated those premises, and there is no convenient nearby grocery store or sales facility similar to this. The applicant is hoping to, through this effort, to provide that opportunity and convenience for those residents. The Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department was contacted in regards to this proposed use. The sheriff's department indicated that they did not have any opposition to its approval. They feel that the restrictions that would be in place on it would be adequate in controlling any potential problems. The applicant is present. I believe that they do want the opportunity to kind of talk about their proposed operation and what they envision happening there, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that I could from staff's perspective on the request.
All right, then. Before we ask our questions to staff, then, since the public hearing is open, why don't we hear from the applicant and whomever that is?
I believe that's Rick Gutierrez. And if you'll excuse me a moment, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to try and find their PowerPoint presentation.
All right. Sure. Welcome, sir. And your name again?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Rick Gutierrez.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. As Mr. Ludicki explained, the purpose of this convenience market is really to provide the service to the residents in those two communities right there. Many of them are not very ambulatory seniors, so they have difficulty going to the market down the street or getting into a bus and traveling. So the purpose, the entire purpose of this, was really to create the convenience for the seniors in that area to be able to buy the items that they need, convenience items. As a matter of fact, our -- the whole product line that we're going to be carrying is going to be guided by the seniors. We did a questionnaire, a survey of all the seniors, and they told us what it is that they feel that they need, produce and toiletries and items like that. That would just be very convenient for them to get there. I think that if you're familiar with Insight Development --
Is there a question?
Okay. Come back. Thank you. Familiar with Insight Development, it's really about improving the property. Its sole purpose is precisely for that. The primary objective of the market is to provide affordable and convenient retail products to the residents in the immediate area. A secondary objective, obviously, is to improve the retail presence along that property line, and obviously, to create jobs in the community. Our proposed floor plan shows that this will be a very well-illuminated store. That's a very big concern of ours, obviously, is safety and security and making that property look good. These are some of the different types of floor plans that we are using as inspiration to be able to create this market. It will not be your typical little market. It will be a very fresh and bright and inviting environment with very well-lit and very upscale materials that are used for the property to make it look nice. So if you have any questions?
I'm sure there will be some.
Great. Thank you.
If you want to just hold right there. We have no other speakers on this. Mr. Ludicki?
I have no other cards on this item.
All right, then. Shall we begin? Anyone?
Sure. I did have a question. When you surveyed, you surveyed people of those two communities, is that correct?
Yes.
How many people did you survey?
I think we surveyed over 300 and 100, and some odd responded, so.
Okay. So you got a third of the people to respond?
Yes.
Out of the respondees of 100, how many mentioned that alcohol was of importance to them?
We didn't put alcohol as part of the questionnaire. As making this a convenience and part of the community there, it has to be a sustainable business model, and alcohol, just out of our research, looking at convenience markets, alcohol represents a, not a sizable, but a pretty serious portion of the income for a service market like that. So it's important for us to make sure that this is a viable business.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Couple.
Mr. Jacobs?
Now, I noticed that you changed your request from type 21 to type 20.
Yes.
Did you think that spirits were an important part of that model, too?
No, not at all. Actually, I think it was more just like a forward-thinking plan, that maybe there was like a margarita mix that was a popular mix. Maybe that was something that would have to be under liquor as opposed to beer and wine. And at the end of the day, I really wasn't familiar with how we were, you know, the two different liquors. This is a completely new business to Insight, so it was just beer and wine is all that we barely need.
Okay. So then, what you're saying, or what I can glean from what you're saying is that alcohol may not be important to the residents there, but you feel it's important to keep that store open?
To try to. Yes. It may become a part that it is what allows that store to maintain its business. Yes.
Okay. So what kind of alcohol we'll be selling, then?
Probably just beer and wine, traditional.
And what kind of packages will you be offering?
It would be like, I think, a six-packs and 12-packs, no individual bottles or anything like that. We definitely don't want this to become a detriment to that property. Obviously, as the owners of the property want to make sure that it actually elevates the property and makes it a good addition to the property.
Well, and I can guarantee you, that's my concern.
Yes.
Especially when, at first, when you were applying for a type 21. So I still have concerns in that regard. When you say you won't sell singles, what -- there are definitely singles that constitute more than a 12-ounce or, say, a 16-ounce can.
Okay.
Where, what do you consider a single and what don't you consider?
I would say that, you know, again, this is, you know, there's a learning process first, but I would say that I wouldn't sell anything under a six-pack. As an individual unit, I would never sell like an individual canned unit or an individual bottle in the beer side of things.
What about units that are not designed to be sold as a package? For instance, 40-ounce?
I probably won't carry those. I will not carry those, let's put it that way.
Okay. Would you be willing to make that a part of the conditional use permit?
Sure. Absolutely. I think it is a part of it, or, yes.
Actually, I don't think that is.
Okay. I would have no problem at all with that.
Unless I'm wrong. Am I, Mr. Chairman?
You're right.
Okay. So it's my understanding that it's not. Our chairman has given me a list of things that would actually be considered detrimental, at least in my regard.
Mm-hmm. And in mine, too.
I think, Mr. Jacobs, the condition number three under the alcohol condition calls out 17.42.080K is being replaced with the new language, "No sales of separate packages of alcohol beverages, i.e., individual containers, cans, or bottles shall be allowed." Now, I'm not sure how you can sell, how you can allow wine sales and not allow individual bottles without restricting a specific kind of bottle of wine or beer. It's too general, in my view. So I think we need to, assuming that the applicant's representative here is willing to work with us, we may spend a few minutes here massaging this a little bit and see if we can come up with a reasonable...
Absolutely.
Assuming that members of the commission agree as well. It's the most important portion, part of it, but I don't, if you're not, go ahead if you're not finished.
Yeah. I get, what he's saying, what I'm hearing, hopefully, aren't two different things, but it sounds like you're interested in at least agreeing to restrict the sales of certain items, but at the same time, we don't want to restrict it so much, certain items that traditionally aren't going to be a problem.
Yes, I agree.
A dollar-bottle of wine is not going to be a problem.
Sure.
But a 40-ounce bottle of beer, potentially, at least to me, is not a convenience item for the seniors in your center.
I agree. I agree. Yes, I'm completely in agreement with you, that, you know, if we are allowed to just specify that there's certain types of, even wines, if there's a specific type of wine that we don't want to carry because it's going to, you know, create a different type of mentality or atmosphere of this convenience store, I'd be more than happy to take it off of our list.
Well, I guess I would leave it up to our chairman then to lead us into how we figure that out.
I've made some notes in advance of the meeting based on my concern, my personal concerns related to single item alcohol beverage sales. And I'll share one with you if you want to come up here. Mr. Ludicki already has a copy? All right. I'll give you a moment to look at that. But for the record, my concerns relate to three things. The last of it starts out in the third paragraph down, excuse me, fourth paragraph, as it relates to section 1742.80K, "No sale of alcoholic beverage products such as fortified beer or malt liquor or fortified wines, such as..." In the beer malt liquor category, products like Old English 880 malt liquor, Jose Jungle Juice, which is a 9.9 alcohol beverage content, Max Live, which is a 12% fortified, Magnum, which is running in the 9 to 10 range, Mickey malt liquor, Steel Reserve 211, Hurricane High Gravity, Cobra, or any other similar beverage in any size container, I think, should not be allowed in this convenience market.
I agree.
That's typically what you find in liquor stores that aren't, that haven't come before us yet.
Yes.
Additionally, I would suggest that no sale of alcoholic beverages products known as fortified wine, such as Cisco 18, that's 18% alcohol content, Wild Irish Rose, Thunderbird, or Teabird, as some of us and older people might remember it.
In our younger years.
Yes. MD 2020, and the all-time favorite, Night Train Express.
Personal favorite of mine.
I don't see the name farm in here.
Yeah. Those kinds of products, and they're like similar products from my chair, should be restricted, not included in your, or not allowed in your operation. So if you concur with that, then...
Absolutely.
When we get to the final conditions, then, we, the commission may choose to add that.
Yeah. I will just read the reading of it. It's very straightforward and very reasonable, and like I said, this is, we don't want that in our property anyways.
All right. Very good. Thank you. There may be some other comments and questions. Mr. Smith?
Well, I actually just have a question as far as what the wording would be for the conditions. I wouldn't see actually listing the products, because I'm sure new products come on the market every day, that how this, would it be listed by alcohol content?
I think that'd be great.
Like, to a certain...
Yeah.
A level beyond 9% won't be allowed or with the malt liquor.
I think we can ask the city attorney, but fortified wine and high-alcohol content beer and malt liquor, if that's the way to describe it. Mr. Adams?
You would probably want to describe it with a little bit more specificity than that. I think it would be advisable, though, to not include specific name brands for a number of reasons. It may be viewed as under-inclusive in one respect, and the makers of alcohol.
Do we know the alcohol beverage content of a product like the regular Budweiser and Coors and that sort of stuff? What is that? It's under 6%?
I can Google it.
You know what it is?
No, I don't know what it is.
I can do some research on this and...
Under 6?
Yes.
It is?
There's, yes, and there's another category. You know, I apologize because I don't know what the ABC has done with these, if they've changed their classifications or not, but the whole line of products that are best described as flavored beer.
Yes.
Mike's Hard Lemonade, Smirnoff Ice are flavored beers, so technically, they can be sold under a license.
But their alcohol content, I guess, maybe if we can get our arms around it, if we know or can say, in an adjustment to the recommendation here, that the alcohol beverage content of any product exceeding what typically is provided in a name-brand beer, like Budweiser or Coors or whatever, in a standard package, I guess, would be excluded from the operation, not allowed under the conditional use permit. Would that work?
Do you think that works? Can I interject? Most wine coolers are fortified beer, and if they're above 4.5%, then you would, even if they're sold in packages, then would you be advocating that they're not be allowed?
I think so. Any fortified product... Any fortified product is, is what I'm looking at, unless somebody can tell me otherwise, and I, you know, it's a point of beginning.
Mm-hmm.
The concern I have is, is, relates to the 40-ouncers and, and the stuff that gives, you know, the customer a real jolt real quick, and, and there's certain clientele that, in certain neighborhoods, that that's the kind of product they seek. I don't think this neighborhood deserves that kind of a clientele.
But we do.
I guess I'm saying it right?
Yes, yes.
I'm agreeing with you.
No, absolutely, no, and, but to the point of maybe some Mike's Hard Liquor, or, or Smirnoff Ice, or some, or certain items like that, you know, I think that I would be, you know, very comfortable with it, it's, and defining what that break-off point is of a heavy alcohol content item, maybe 8 percent, I don't know, and then go based on that, and whether it's a fortified beer or not, I'd have to see how you distinguish that, because I think Mike's Lemonade wouldn't be a, a bad product that would give us, be in the wrong category there, as opposed to the 40, the Kowamas, or something like that.
But we do have non-fortified beer that's sold in 40 ounces, too.
Yeah, do, go, go after it that way. And, well, and the SASS recommendation is no sale of separate package of alcohol beverages at all. I don't know how you do that, though, with wine.
Well, actually, the intent of that, of that condition is that if something is intended for package in multi, multi-packs, that they can't be separated. If beer is the primary concern, I would, I would suggest that you could probably, and the applicant's willing, we, we've had trouble with this with supermarkets and some others because they obviously go a little bit more on the gamut, but you might be able to simply add a condition that says you cannot sell single containers of beer. That gets you kind of out of the issue of the wine, and you can define that maybe in another way. But that would, that would restrict any single can sale or single bottle sale of, of beer, regardless of size.
All right. Okay, well, it gives us some to consider as well. All right, there, are we done with the alcohol beverage portion of it? I have some more questions and comments, too. What did I do with it? Hmm, no, right in front of me. On your site plan, you've defined, I should say on your floor plan, beg your pardon, the, the two locations where the produce, fresh product would be displayed and sold, and then the alcohol beverage product displayed and sold identified by, hmm, it would be a crosshatch on what would be the eastern end of the store, the first from the entry door, and then on the fresh produce and frozen, it would appear, up on the north end, is the way I see it, is that about right?
Yes, that's about right.
So you, so you have, you have no plans to display or sell alcohol beverage products other than in the cold cases, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
So there wouldn't be a, a display of cases or 12 packs or six packs or whatever on the floor, on a end cap or?
As a doorbuster, no, I don't anticipate that.
Okay, good. We'll probably hold you to that.
Okay.
And is some of your other keynotes identify keynote numbers which aren't displayed on your floor plan, so if they don't show on the floor plan, then it's not something you're going to install in your store, right?
I believe so.
Like, for instance, number 63?
63, yeah, I don't see it.
Okay, or 64?
No.
Okay. So you've, you've really got some specially reaching boxes designed for this store, I mean, you're spending some serious money.
Yes, because it's all curved. It's all curved, it is.
Right, all right. Okay, now, on your site, on the, the site plan of the facility, when I looked at it, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, there did not appear to be a rear door access to this proposed store.
That's correct.
And I couldn't see, and maybe there is one, but again, correct me if I'm wrong, there doesn't appear to be any loading area or unloading area, loading area, either one, in, on the site.
Yes, it is through the back, there is an actually back access, there's a door, and that would be primarily where the shipments would be coming through.
So, so where do you load and unload?
You load and unload in that, in that back parking area.
That says tenants only, and where you can only.
I believe.
Drive in and back out that area?
I believe so, yes. I, but they're probably going to be parking on the street, then walking there to unload with their, with their carts.
Well, there's no parking, there's restricted parking on 10th Street West.
Yeah, not 10th Street, but the.
And there, and there's no parking between your eastern driveway and the intersection on the north side of the street at all.
Okay.
So, what are you telling us? Where do you?
Well, I believe that there's parking in the, in the immediate rear of it, there's, there's guest parking, do you know? That, that's where, he's probably more familiar with the property than I am.
I'm, I'm looking at the site plan you all provided, so that's all I'm doing by.
Okay. I, I don't have a good answer as to where they're going to be going to, the parking or not, I can find that out for you.
Okay. You notice in the paper I gave you, there was a sentence that says, "No deliveries, loading, or unloading of delivery vehicle shall take place on or in 10th Street West or West Jackman Street."
Okay.
And "All delivery shall be confined or restricted to designated loading areas as not to interfere with customer parking, ADA parking, and/or pedestrian access or site circulation."
Yes.
That's pretty tight.
Yes, it is, and, and I know that they do have, there's other commercial entities there, retailers there, so there, I know that there is commercial loading and unloading, I just don't know exactly where.
I'm, I'm sure it takes place.
Yes.
But from the site plan you provided, it doesn't appear that there is anything designated to accommodate that.
Okay.
That's my concern.
Okay.
And, and if there's no accommodation for that, and when deliveries take place, and you have a very tight site, it appears to me, at least when I drove it, it's quite a challenge. So if the commission agrees to include that as a condition, you know, you may want to talk about it before.
Sure.
We get too far down the road.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, maybe you want to huddle for a minute, and.
Sure.
And we'll, we'll continue this matter and let, and then hear a couple more, and then let you come back, if that's all right with you.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be perfect.
Because I, I don't want to put a, suggest a burden on you that you can't comply with.
Sure. I mean, and Jackman, is there just no allowance for any, anything on Jackman, then?
Pardon?
There, there wouldn't be any allowance to do anything on the unloading there on Jackman, then?
Well, the way it currently is, there's, there's no allowance for it, because it's a, it's a, um, very narrow street, and it's all, and a signalized intersection, plus you have curb cuts, multiple curb cuts on the north side accessing your, your various products.
Yeah.
On the north and south side, plus you have the children's centers further east.
Okay.
So it's, I mean, it's a tight location.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Very, very difficult.
Yes.
But deliveries must be accommodated, and a convenience store gets more than one delivery a day, it gets multiple deliveries, I, from.
Yes.
Various vendors.
Yes.
And, God love them, they park in the middle of the street or wherever in the heck they.
I agree.
Want to, and, and that will create a, a difficulty for you, I think, and, and code enforcement will be down there knocking on your door, well, we'd like to prevent that.
Absolutely, no, and, and like I said, I think, I believe it's the area that's over there where the water fountain is, but I, I'll double check and I'll let you know.
Okay, well, why don't, why don't we put this hearing in abeyance for a, a little bit, let you guys huddle, and, and then we'll call you back.
Thank you. Did you want to address any other issues, security or anything else?
No, not there, not there yet, but I, if you agree, then we'll.
Yes.
There may be, may be other comments and questions before we let you go.
Absolutely.
From anyone? All right. Thank you, and we'll keep the public hearing open on this matter.
Thank you.
All right. Does staff have any comments they'd like to address on this matter before we go to the next item?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
In regards to the, to the parking, the way that the parking was designed to work on the site is that the parking immediately behind the buildings, and this was a point of discussion with the original developer, who's still the owner of the property, the, the parking there is done at the rate of, of one space per dwelling unit. That may or may not be excessive, depending on the, the actual use, however, the, the parking immediately behind the commercial building is gate-controlled and was intended for the use of the residents that are living in the dwelling units above the commercial location.
Did you say they were gate-controlled?
Yes, they're supposed to be gate-controlled.
The only, the only gate I, the only gate I noticed in what's shown on the site plan is to the residence project to the east. There doesn't appear to be on the site plan, nor on site, a gate restricting or controlling access to the two-story project, or whatever it is.
Okay, on the plans, it, it does indicate two of them, not fencing, but a gate. Now.
So is, is it the, east of the PIV on the north side of Jackman, the note PIV, just north and east of that, and there's an arrow that says gate?
Yes.
Okay, that access is into the, the three-story residential dwelling project to the east of this project. There doesn't appear that, on my site plan, to be anything identified as a gate on this project site.
Okay.
There is a, a gate to the north, which it looks to me to be a fire lane circulation access gate. That's all. I mean, I don't want to belabor it, but it, it's a tight site, obviously, I mean, you.
Yeah.
You'd agree, wouldn't you?
Yeah, the parking that is, the parking that is in kind of these alcoves behind the, the bend of the buildings was intended to be resident parking.
Yes.
The, the parking along the, the, the eastern strand, if you will, that, you know, where they head in east and, and a couple to the, to the west, that was intended to be parking for the commercial ground floor.
Okay.
And, and the area further east of that, obviously, for the, the residential, or, or residential-only buildings further east.
And, and those accesses are protected by bollards, it would appear, so.
Yes.
If somebody's going to try to create a loading or unloading area, it's going to be challenging. Hmm?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments you want, would like to address, Mr. Ludick? All right, then we'll just continue this matter until we call it back up again and move to the next item on the agenda without objection. Next item is item number five, which is, is, condition, this is a public hearing on conditional use permit number 0907. The applicant is Vintage's Wine Room at the Loffs Galleries, so the public hearing is open. It's uncontested, however, do we have speaker cards?
No, I have no speakers cards, Mr. Chairman. I believe that the applicant is, however, present.
Oh, all right, very good. Does anyone care to hear a staff report on this matter? All right, just as a reminder, this is the, this is a, an applicant that's been before us before, who, who had a different location that we previously approved, and that's, it's a relocation in effect, so. All right, okay. So then, without objection, we'll close the public hearing, we have no speakers, so a motion would be in order on item number five.
I move to adopt resolution number 09-32, approving conditional use permit number 09-07.
Thank you. Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All right, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Pass unanimous. Okay, the next public hearing is conditional use permit 0910. The applicant is the Reston House LLC. And I'm assuming we have some speaker cards on this item?
I have one card, Mr. Chairman, I believe it is the, the owner.
All right.
Or owner's representative.
Okay, so the public hearing is open on conditional use permit 0910, the Reston House applicant. We have received a letter on uncontested on this. Anyone care to hear a staff report on this matter? All right, none? All right, shall we hear from a speaker then, please? Apicant, I believe?
Lorna or Lorena Green?
Ms. Green? Evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Sandy. Bye, Smear. I was hearing, I'm, I'm familiar with this, we've been in the same location for 40 years, so this is all new to us, but I've been hearing everybody talking, and our primary objective is to keep being the Antelope Valley, good Mexican food, in a family atmosphere, and to continue to carry on our 40-year business that our family gave, handed down to us, that we've been blessed with, with all our customers from Antelope Valley that have, you know, kept supporting us, and we just want to continue to do what we've been blessed with.
All right, very good, well, thank you.
We'd appreciate it if you did approve it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the applicant? None? All right, then it's appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion on conditional use permit 0910.
Recommend that we adopt resolution number 0934, approving conditional use permit number 09-10.
I'll second.
Did you read that right?
Right.
I'm sorry. Thank you. So, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion from anyone? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. Pass unanimous, and congratulations. Be a nice move for our community. All right, item number seven is tentative tract map number 61246. Public hearing is open on this matter, which is a recommendation to deny the tentative tract map. Do we have any speakers on this matter?
I have two speakers cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then let me, let's have a staff report, please.
Chairman Voss and Commissioners, the City of Lancaster is asking that to deny tentative tract map number 61246, because the applicant has not responded to the city's request to continue their project. We have been working with them or been trying to get them to respond since April of 2008. Therefore, based on the lack of progress or refusal to withdraw the project, staff is unable to complete the environmental review, make the findings, and therefore, staff is recommending that commission deny tentative tract map number 61246 due to lack of progress. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, there may be some. Anyone have any questions, staff? All right, none? May I hear from the app, or from the speakers, please?
Larry McPeak.
Good evening, Mr. McPeak, and welcome.
Good evening, thank you very much. I'm, I'm here in favor of denying the proposal to, for developments on the, the screen here of 40th and J8. And I thank you very much, City Planning Commission, for hearing me this afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. I am the president of the Homeowners Association at Rancho Cariel Sol, which is just adjacent to this development here. It's Catty Corner, actually. It's between J8 and K, and Forty-Fifth and Thirty-Fifth Street is our subdivision. And I know that the high school, which is just approximately a quarter mile from this development here, went through an extensive environmental study of their property before they started construction on their high school. We had the opportunity, our subdivision, to see some of their findings, of which there was a dry riverbed that went through the high school area, and there are other dry riverbeds in the area, which could affect the area where this development is going in. I think that needs to be assessed, as well as they found that there were native plants and animals living in where the high school was. They were able to accommodate that, but it needs to be considered at the time that development occurs. Also, in this area right here, there's agriculture, at least in portion of this development over the years, and with the use of chemicals and such items as that, I don't know what they're using for the agriculture development in that area, but I think that needs to be considered for the environmental report that they have not provided to you. And I think all of that is a very important element of getting approved for a new development going in. Also, I would look from what I will call, from the personal side of it, for the development there. There are schools that are close by. There are two existing schools. There's one at Lancaster Baptist Church, and there's the East Side High School that was just constructed. And there's a new school just across the street from it, actually, that will be developed over the next couple, three years, which is the Union Elementary School. So I think those schools need to be considered at the time that we give permits for sidewalks, larger walking areas, and such as that in the area. I know they're having considerations for our subdivisions made by other subdivisions going in, proposals in the past, where they've developed, provided question trails, because we are a horse community, and such as that. So I thank you very much for your consideration, and I would propose, as being proposed here, to deny the permit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McPeak. Another speaker?
Arden Hughes.
Mr. Hughes? Evening, welcome, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Arden Hughes. I live at 44007, Forty-Fifth Street East. I'm directly across the street from this proposed development. I came tonight to ask some questions about it, but being that Royal Developers Investment Corporation isn't here to defend themselves, maybe I'll just save my questions until they come back. Would that be what we should do tonight?
The recommendation before us is to deny the tract map, so if and when the applicant ever applies again, if he chooses, or they choose, then it'll be another public hearing and properly published, and you'll have notice, certainly.
I'll save my comments for then, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hughes. All right. Any further speakers?
No other speakers.
Any comments from members? All right, then it'd be appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion on recommendation of staff to deny the tentative tract map number 61246.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number 09-33, denying tentative tract map number 61246.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. Any further comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, "no." Pass unanimously. All right, the next item is new business, item number eight, initiate zone ordinance modifications. This is a new matter before us, Mr. Luticki.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, under the city zoning code, it's either the city council or the city planning commission that is required to initiate changes to the current zoning regulations. We are asking that you initiate two potential modifications to the zoning code. One, kind of following up, as you'll recall, on the issue of small-scale wind turbines that we approved for residential application and was approved by the city council several months ago. We are asking that you give some consideration to additional modifications that would allow the placement, once again, of small-scale wind turbines in commercial and industrial zones and settings, subject to a director's review application. We have also recently begun to receive a number of inquiries in some of our further outlying areas. Most of these areas are zoned, designated on the general plan as non-urban. The zoning classification on them is typically RR2.5, which is the city's least-dense zoning classification. And in places where there are large parcels, in some cases, they were previously sites that were proposed for subdivision at urban residential densities, the city obviously didn't accommodate those in its recent general plan update, but we are beginning to get inquiries from companies who may be interested in looking at photovoltaic solar generation sites. I wouldn't say that this is everywhere, but certainly, we've had enough inquiry that we think some consideration ought to be given to modifying the city zoning code to allow these uses by a conditional use permit. Currently, the city does allow by right solar energy-type plants in light industrial and heavy industrial zones in the city, but nowhere else. This would, we feel, give another option, particularly if sites are located along existing transmission lines or are located sufficiently far from residential areas, and may allow for some productive use of some of those outlying areas that currently wouldn't be permitted. The current, or the requirement for a conditional use permit, would allow the city, through the planning commission, to review these types of applications, determine whether or not a site was in fact appropriate for the type of use being proposed, and impose conditions if it was determined necessary to do that. If you, as a commission, do choose to initiate these actions, we expect that we would be back in front of you at your December 21 regular meeting with the ordinances for your consideration. We do have one speaker on this item, too, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Okay, we'll hold our questions until we hear from the speaker then, please.
Owen Hurd.
Mr. Hurd, is it?
Yes.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Vos, Vice Chair and Commissioners. My name is Owen Hurd. I'm the president of a company called Two-Soul Energy. We're a developer of utility-scale solar plants. We're venture-backed, we're located in Seattle, but we're focused in Southern California. Our focus is mid-sized plants, photovoltaics, and in close proximity to the existing grid, allowing for an easier interconnection to the utility in California ISO. Due to the risks and common pitfalls associated with renewable energy development, we've been very particular in our site selection. We spent the better part of the last four months looking at sites throughout Southern California, and currently have under contract a site located on 100th and Avenue I. It's 200 acres agriculturally disturbed, fallow ag land, and based on our initial assessment, it appears to be a highly viable site. Currently, it is owned, rural residential, but if this were to be changed, we would submit an application for a conditional use permit immediately thereafter. To date, we have submitted an interconnection request and submitted an application for a power purchase agreement to Southern California Edison, and we would plan to break ground in 2010. We would be developing this site in joint venture with a more traditional power developer that has built large natural gas and coal-fired plants abroad, and currently have U.S. projects as well. In terms of what this plant would look like, just to give you a little bit of a sense, this would be 160 acres of flat photovoltaic panels, maximum height of 15 to 20 feet, have very low visual impact and minimal water usage, and it's estimated to provide roughly enough power for about 3,000 homes. We would make, if this were to move forward and the ordinance were to be changed, we would make every effort to involve the community. We estimate that it would create between 300 and 400 construction jobs, with some jobs then on a more permanent basis for maintenance and support of the plant. As firm believers in the promise of renewable energy, we would also make it a priority to involve the schools, and specifically to offer field trips to the elementary schools and middle schools, and engage with the community colleges. Anyway, it's, we're firmly committed to the success of this and would very much appreciate your consideration to this ordinance change.
All right, thank you. Any questions from members?
Just one quick question. You said Avenue I and 100th, is that east or west?
West, west. So it's about a half a mile north of Antelope Substation.
All right. Anything else? All right, thank you. Thank you, sir. So is that in our jurisdiction or adjacent to it? His property?
It is.
In our jurisdiction?
It is in our jurisdiction, yes, it is. It was, just by way of reference, it was a subject of a conditional, a general plan amendment application several years ago to go from rural residential to urban residential. Obviously, given the housing market, that proposal has stalled.
Okay. You've defined power plants as a, I think in our staff briefing last week, we discussed power plants. What accommodation has been considered, or hasn't any accommodation been considered for commercial industrial buildings for this type of renewable energy source?
I want to make sure I understand your question completely, in terms of using them...
Roof, yeah, roof-mounted, that type of thing on those larger commercial centers.
Actually, under our current regulations, something that is looked at as kind of an accessory used to a permitted use on a property is already allowed, and we have a number of examples in our city already. HW Hunter does, in fact, have a shade structure that has photovoltaic on top of it. The Antelope Valley Transit Authority has the same sort of thing. We have a number of school districts that are looking at that kind of approach, and in fact, the city itself is looking at that in terms of, you know, shaded parking structures and similar approaches. So those things we've been successful at. I think the difference, obviously, here is that this would not be connected to any other use on the property. This would be a standalone thing developed exclusively for the generation of electrical power.
All right, thank you. Any further questions or comments from staff? All right, then. What's your pleasure, folks? We have a recommendation before us.
I make a recommendation that we initiate zoning ordinance modification to allow small-scale wind turbines in the commercial and industrial zones, and allow solar power plants in rural residential zones, subject to a conditional use permit.
I second the motion.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying "aye," please.
Aye.
Those opposed, "no." Passes unanimously. All right, we have some special guests this evening. Members of, or chairperson, I should say, of the Design, Architectural Design and Design Commission, Chairperson Cook, and Commissioner Bu Cannon, and we may have others, I'm not sure. Mr. Luticki, do we have other members present? No, I don't think so.
No.
You're present, however, staff has some parts present, too.
All right, I'm sure you do. So why don't you go right ahead?
Chairman Vos and Commissioners, the Architectural Design Planning Commission is pleased to provide the highlights of the design guidelines that they worked so hard to establish. The city council put the Architectural Design Planning Commission in place on August of 2008, and they spent most of the time learning the design concepts, investigating other design guidelines from other cities, going on field trips to learn more about design terms and concepts, and writing and rewriting the design guidelines. So I'll be happy to begin the presentation. The design guidelines provide direction to achieve quality design for all development within the city. The guidelines are intended for new construction, redevelopment, and renovation of existing facilities unless they are under the control of a specific plan. The guidelines are designed to be the tool to evaluate whether the project meets timeless architecture style without dictating a specific architectural style. They provide comprehensive treatment of the built environment and quality urban design to create a walkable, sustainable, cohesive, and enduring built environment. Each development is intended to contribute to the form and quality of life and to improve the city's visual identity by utilizing design standards for a more sustainable, livable Lancaster. The community came up with a mission statement to establish standards for all development by implementing quality design for timeless architecture that enhances the community's image, pride, and quality of life. Typically, that means the architecture must fit, must respond to the immediate area, recognize the importance of public space, provide a, the building must provide investment in the community, minimizing the use of energy, water, and finite resources. The design guidelines require that a project improve upon its surroundings to benefit the public. Billings must be inviting and sustain interest, should accommodate the intended use, and reflect importance of people in human-scale design. And so that would include building, landscaping, site, and they all should create places that are amenable and comfortable for the human. The purpose of the guidelines is to conform to general plan policies, to foster attractive unique image, and create enduring environment. The guidelines implement General Plan Policy 19.11, which state, "Develop and apply a comprehensive set of community design standards and guidelines in conformance with the goals, objectives, policies, and action programs in the Community Design Section." The way this is organized, it's organized in, before I go into all development, the document is organized into sections by type of development. All development is the first and the largest in these sections, and includes those guidelines that apply generally to all types of development. And then it's followed by single-family, or residential, which includes single-family and multiple-family, commercial, mixed-use, and industrial. And then each section is further divided into categories of site design and building architecture. And we have added an intent statement, which describes the desired outcome, and suggested solutions. So we start with all development, and we talk about smart growth and sustainability. And some of the smart growth concepts include quality housing for different income levels, desirable places to live, work, play, and worship, walkable communities, trails, pedestrian connections, gathering areas, appropriate alternative transportation. All development includes sustainable green construction technologies and alternate energies, and then on the... And then on the right, the top right-hand corner, you'll see cool roofs. We look at vertical axes, wind turbines, photovoltaics, solar heating and energy production, building orientation, smart landscaping using zero scape techniques and street scape designs. Each project must make sure that they, they screen the parking lots and utilities and accessory structures. If you can see in the top photo, you'll see that there's a wall and landscaping separating residential from the commercial use to the right. We want the developer to carefully design, locate, and integrate utilitarian equipment into the project so it won't look like an afterthought. We include screening the roof, the fire access, and all outside utilities that has to be included inside the building. Roof design, very, we want varied roof design to create interest. That would also lessen the mass of the building and add visual appeal and reduce the scale of the building. On the top left-hand side, you'll see a multiple family photo that the project's broken up, the mass is broken up into smaller sections, and it uses different roof lines to create interest and windows that also help out. One of the requirements of All Development would be to include 360-degree architecture using quality materials and appropriate colors. The 360-degree architecture is important because it would create shadow lines and massing and fenestration, articulate walls, provide a change in the plane of the wall, and break down the mass into, into small massings similar to the Walmart on Valley Central. And again, we have a multiple family project on the bottom right, sorry, bottom left. And again, they're breaking up the mass with colors of materials, the use of windows, the inset, the windows, they use awnings and facade changes. Most importantly, we're looking at, all buildings should add interest, variety, and contrast, and fit into the contextual surroundings. We go into residential. Typically, we're looking at a modified grid pattern, and some of the important components are to provide connectivity for pedestrian and vehicles, employ traffic calming measures, create subdivisions for walkability by pathways and, and design for a smaller block size. We're looking at walkable streets, protected paths, interesting street skates, and varied dwellings. And streets should read as a well-defined space. We're looking at innovative sub design with varied widths and setbacks and garage orientation to create attractive neighborhoods with attractive front yards, looking at wider corner lots and creating visual interesting streets with parkways. Here you have two different houses with the garage placed in the back. And the, the houses are also placed closer to the street to make it more pedestrian-friendly. They have protected sidewalks with mature canopy trees and parkways and awnings. The pedestrian walkways are highly visible from the street elevations with the front porches and balconies and the windows that face the street. There's a lot of visual appeal, compatible changes in form, material, and color. And you can tell where the entry of the house is. Porches, balconies, and windows with eyes on the street, use of parkway planters, nice use of porch on the, the photo on the right. We're looking at entry points and focal points and entries into subdivisions. We want them, the developer to design the neighborhood entries to be distinct, to make sure entry ways that reflect the architecture and the design, the architecture of the subdivision and design of the street. We're looking at creating recognizable focal points that create sense of identity, civic pride, and sense of place. Open space in common areas, we're looking at usable open space to provide higher quality of life through social interactions to serve the neighborhoods. We want the developer to design the open space to be viewed from the adjacent residence surrounding the open space, and we want to provide pedestrian connections throughout the open space facility and residential area. We believe that landscaping is very important, however, it must be appropriate. We're looking at the appropriate use of trees, bushes, with minimal amount of grass and using minimal irrigation wherever possible. Commercial, site planning is the arrangement of buildings, plazas, parking, pedestrian connections, landscaping, and their interrelationship. In this site plan, you'll see the buildings are closer, placed closer to the street. They have ample sidewalks, street furniture, protected pedestrian park, sidewalks with, we're looking at mature canopy trees for the interior of the parking lots and parking behind the buildings. Again, here's a photo of sidewalk activity at the street, with street level shops. You can see where the frequent entries are on the left, and they provide dining. In the photo to the top left, you'll see a big box, and surrounding the big, big box is like a main street type environment that breaks up the mass. And again, we're looking at emphasizing the building entries oriented inline shops in front of big box doors. And the, the graphic to the bottom left also shows breaking up the big box with many smaller tenants surrounding the building. You can see that in Victoria Gardens, and you can also see that in, I mean, commercial development in Ojai Ranch area, which is very popular. We believe that you, that the developers should define, design common areas that provide social gathering, people watching, and dining. We want defined outdoor rooms and courtyards, intimate settings, well-defined pedestrian-friendly common areas with amenities and pedestrian connections, and making sure that safety's a feature. Here you'll see a graphic indicating that pedestrian access is important in and throughout the commercial development so that a pedestrian can reach the street to provide, I mean, to obtain alternative transportation. Within the parking areas, you'll see planter islands and raised walkways for pedestrians. So we're looking at separating pedestrians and vehi, vehicles whenever possible. The next slide will show another example of parking lot planting with shade, safety for pedestrians, breaking up the huge mass of the parking lot, screening and separating the pedestrian from the vehicle wherever possible. Just another example of breaking up the parking area from the, from the large, breaking it into smaller parking areas and making sure, or trying to avoid having the parking adjacent to the corners. You'll see that there's commercial buildings on the corners and the street furniture wherever possible. And that would help with the street edge. Again, building facades, inset, canopies, wing walls, trellis features, arcades and colonnades, wrapping, the window glazing around the corners of the building wherever possible, especially, or as much as possible, at least 50%. Here we, we show how important it is to have pedestrian scaled entries. Not only the entries need to be pedestrian scaled, but the first two stories, and we encourage rich visual detail for those two levels. Next, we go into mixed use. We're basically looking at zero front setback with parking in the rear, activating the pedestrian realm with attention to entryways, windows and doors, providing areas for seating, resting, dining, people watching, and overall goal is to provide a cohesive urban form. Industrial, the industrial is really important to make sure that noise or odor issues do not create a nuisance for adjacent properties, making sure that the building looks good from the street, clearly indicating all loading areas and providing proper turning radiuses for trucks, providing separate parking lots for employees, citizens from those larger trucks, and screening, of course. And on this slide, Mr. Ludeke will speak to it.
One of the issues that was discussed by the ADC through this process was, it's one thing to require improvements, it's one thing to require a higher level of, of public services and so forth that accompany these kinds of things, but the reality is that it's difficult unless you have some kind of financing mechanism in place to ensure that those are maintained properly for the long term. You know, it's, it's difficult enough at times to, to deal, as you're all aware, with, with private development and trying to make sure that those are well, well-maintained and, and well-managed. However, given, given the demands that are often, often exist on public dollars, trying to ensure that there are adequate sources of, of funding to ensure that things are maintained is, is much more difficult. The reality, you know, without getting too heavily into the rather twisted mess that is government financing in California, because, you know, I, I don't have a week to sit here and talk to you about it, but I'm sure we could, we could all look at it from our, from our angles. The fact of the matter is that there are not as, as many options available to local government as there once were. One of the major factors in that obviously is the adoption in, in June of 1978 of Proposition 13, and of course, that was a response to a very real problem that was ongoing at that time. You had a rapid run-up in property value, and you had a concurrent rapid increase in the level of property tax assessment that, that was occurring. The, the vote of the electorate at that time was, it did a number of things. It, it rolled assessments back to a certain pre-1978 level. It capped assessment increase at 2%, or valuation increase at 2% annually, essentially for as long as somebody was, was continuing to, to hold that property. It put in place a two-thirds voter approval requirement for any increases in the property tax rate, and of course, it capped the overall property tax assessment at 1%, accounting obviously for any previously adopted indebtedness that had been approved. There have been some modifications to it since that time, probably the most significant, allowing, I believe, for a 55% vote on, on school bonds. But by and large, those restrictions stay in place. And, and what it has done essentially is sent local government ultimately looking for other funding sources to, to deal with obtaining the necessary money for funding public services. The other thing that it did was essentially created, and I know we talked about this, I think to some extent when the, the Westside Commercial projects were being considered, residential development with maybe some exceptions for, for very high-density projects or more urban-style projects, but largely the, the single-family style of development that we see in suburban communities generates more in cost than it generates in revenue. Local government has long, you know, tried to balance that with adequate commercial development in particular to try and obtain the necessary money to, to fund their, their public services. Hence, you know, what we've seen over the last 30 years or so where cities and jurisdictions battle each other over major shopping projects, auto malls, things of that type that are, that are tax-rich and tend to demand less in the way of services than residential development does. One of the, the options though that does exist in California is what's known as a Community Facilities District. These are allowed under state law. They are placed, or can be placed on development before or in concurrent with development of that property. It does require a vote of the landowner, but largely that landowner is usually the developer of the project. And, you know, if they understand what those dollars are going to fund and, and service, they quite frankly will usually be supportive of it provided that the rate does not increase the cost to the project beyond what they could then sell it in the market for. And second, whatever benefit accrues to that project needs to be clearly identified and, you know, they need to see that, that it's not hurting their financial position. In fact, it, it makes hopefully the project more valuable. So one of the things that the, the Architectural Design Commission has asked us to transmit to the City Council is a, a recommendation that they consider as an option, the placement of a Community Facilities District essentially on all-new development within the city, especially residentially-oriented development, to ensure that the, the facilities and services that kind of come along with this higher level of, of, of design quality will be there, that we don't have a situation where we get the paseos and the, and the trail systems, or we get the, the parkway systems in place that are very attractive, but over time, because they aren't maintained adequately, become a detriment rather than the, the benefit that they were intended to be. So that's one of the things that, you know, certainly is going to be talked about, I think, at the City Council level when this gets to them. And I wanted you as a, as a commission to be aware that the ADC spent obviously a great deal of time on design, but didn't forget about the more practical side of how you deal with the financial realities that this kind of thing creates and the demands that it creates. That's really, you know, what I have to say on this particular subject. You know, I, I don't know if the, the members of the ADC who are here would have anything that they'd like to add, or our former ADC member that's now on the Planning Commission may have anything to add, particularly about the process that they've gone through because it has been quite involved and they spent a great deal of time along with Sylvia Donovan, and I would call out also Chris Ahnny, who is, who is, you know, I haven't seen them a lot lately. They've been, they've been working very diligently on this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ludeke. And since they now have all this free time ahead of them, we may have some opportunities to discuss later on in our agenda. Did Chairman Cook or Commissioner Buchanan care to offer any comments this evening? You're certainly welcome to if you'd like. At least come up and take a bow for crying, I mean, at least I'll stand up and, so we can see you and congratulate you for all your hard work, and, and Ms. Harvey as well, who was on your commission up until just recently, and we really appreciate the, the effort.
Thank you. We'd like to thank, thank the staff as well.
Very good. Very good. Thank you.
Great job.
Terrific.
Very impressive.
I did notice in, in the detail on page 43, they have, no, 44, I'm sorry, 43 and 44, is it related to signage and so forth? That was an area I'd like to, to chat a bit about before we conclude this evening on some signage issues. And I believe a couple of members of the commission wanted to talk about trails and that type of thing as well this evening. So, all right, so does that conclude the report? So, all right, so does that conclude the report, then?
Yes, staff has nothing additional to add.
All right. We really appreciate you taking the time this evening to bring this report to us and all the information, and thank you, Ms. Cook and Mr. Buchanan, for coming tonight and listening. We appreciate your efforts as well.
And Ms. Harvey, certainly.
All right, then, let's go back to item number, where did it go here? Item number four, which is conditional use permit 0906, and as a reminder, the public hearing is still open, so.
Did you want that to stay?
Pardon?
Did you think they should stay for the end of that? And then they're just...
They don't need to. They don't need to. All right, the public hearing is open, and, where are we? Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you again, Chairman and Vice Chair and Commissioners. I spoke with a property owner, and he related to me that the east side of the property along the fence line, there's ample, more than ample, retail parking spaces there, that we can allocate specific area there for loading and unloading zones for the market.
Okay. Do you have any comments on that, Mr. Ludiki, or Ms. Donovan? She's gone.
No, Mr. Chairman, I think it would be fair to say, and trying to think back to five and a half years ago when we reviewed that project, I think the thought was that, given the size and scale of the commercial tenants, we didn't expect, obviously, large-scale type of loading and unloading. We thought it would be more small-scale, but I think it's certainly an issue that deserves some evaluation.
So where does that leave the commission, then? If we have a recommendation before us, but potentially further evaluation of the site circulation and loading and unloading and parking issues, is this a matter that needs to be continued, then, or what?
Well, I'm thinking that what we may want to do, and of course, you know, we've already heard some of the concerns expressed in terms of alcohol sales, and I think, as I recall, Commissioner Jacobs was saying he's trying to look for that right balance, you know, to keep out the stuff that may create a problem, but allow the things that obviously may be useful for the business. You know, my feeling, and part of it, I would say, in this case, although you're supposed to look entirely at the property, I think we do have to consider the track record of the applicant and the property owner. They tend to be, if there is a problem, they tend to correct them. But I think that in this case, I would be, you know, if we can come to a reasonable list of conditions, perhaps there ought to be the opportunity to review the operation six months from when it starts and see if that loading or the type of alcohol restrictions have caused some kind of concern or problem. As I said, I'm putting a little bit of faith here, I think, in the particular applicant and property owner. They are long-term at that location, they haven't divested themselves of those properties, and I, you know, my inclination is that they would probably correct anything that would be detrimental to their long-term business profit, given the, you know, the type of people and tenants that they're dealing with.
And if I may as well, we don't anticipate this market being a very high volume, so the types of vendors and providers that we are having to deal with are the smaller type of providers, so we don't anticipate there being huge trucks and large volume of trucks for deliveries.
The reality, though, in the types of vendor delivery is pretty well standardized, as you're probably well aware. I mean, the typical soft drink vendor, you know, delivers in a semi. The typical alcohol beverage vendor is also in a semi.
But I don't anticipate those being so frequent that it would cause any burden, but even having said that, and as Sir Ludiki said, the developer, the property owner has always been able to, if it doesn't work, six months from now, we'll come back and we'll revisit and find a solution that works.
Yeah, I think the commission recognizes that, and it's obvious from Mr. Ehrlich's developments that have taken place here in the community and currently under construction. I mean, it's obvious that he's interested in his successful, high-quality developments in the community. I think what the commission members are concerned about is the potential of the wrong, an incompatible tenant mix, or clientele mix with the tenants that you currently serve. You know, we recognize a number of those tenants are, have certain restrictions on their mobility and that type of thing, and there's some other concerns that others have raised, too, about the type of tenant mix you currently have, and the kinds of signage that's on the building, and how it may not necessarily meet the current requirements of the signing ordinance, sign ordinance in the city. Those, you know, a certain portion of it's not very attractive, and I don't think that that was the intent of the planners when it was approved.
Yes. And we're trying to improve that, so that's, the whole purpose of the market is to really improve that properly.
Maybe we can help you with that.
Always open.
Anyway, you know, I'm not trying to put words in the member's mouth, but we certainly have voiced our concerns, and as you probably know, we meet in a public meeting a week prior to this meeting and flush out a lot of the issues, and, but not necessarily all of them. So, at any rate, we appreciate your time, and thank you, Mr. Ludiki, for your comments. I'm not certain how we're, how we're going to deal with that, but at any rate. All right, any further questions or comments from the applicant? To the applicant, I should say. From anyone? Nope? All right. All right, we thank you, sir, for your comments and your patience in waiting on us.
Thank you.
Hold on just a minute. You may have a comment, Ms. Haycock?
What's your anticipated date of opening? This would be...
I would say that inside of six months. We're working to develop some of the relationships with the vendors, and interestingly enough, it's a little bit challenging for a small operation like this to get them to call you back, so we're moving as quickly as possible, but I would say inside of six months.
Okay.
All right, anyone else? Okay. Well, we thank you for your comments, sir, and appreciate your being here tonight.
Thank you.
And it's appropriate to close the public hearing without objection? All right. So, we have a recommendation before us and other written comments and such. Whatever you want. So, discussion of the members. After Mr. Ludiki had to say, what would you like to do, folks?
As far as the recommendation, or the motion, I mean, our recommendations differ, I think there's some things that we'd like to add to the recommendation, is that correct? Do we agree on that? And back to the alcohol content discussion, would that be appropriate to put a cap on the percentage of alcohol? I've got the numbers.
Well, good. Why don't you share the numbers?
Mike's Hard Liquor.
Why don't you share the numbers?
Mike's Hard Lemonade is 5%, and then Bud is 4.6. There's 4.6, and there's 5%, both listed. And of course, the wine contents are anywhere from 10% to 14%, so.
In the, in a normal, what I would consider a normal wine beverage in a 750-milliliter bottle?
Yes.
As opposed to a fortified wine?
Correct.
So, let's see if we can bring it to a consensus, then. So what you're possibly suggesting is that the conditional use permit limit the sale of beverages, beer beverages or malt liquor beverages that exceed, anything over 5% would be restricted, would not be allowed?
I'd say 5% or 6%. Maybe give us a little leeway, I don't know.
See, I have a, if I can speak.
Go right ahead.
I know there's some alcohol restrictions in California right now, and I think it revolves around naming it or labeling it malt liquor, and I'm not sure what that percentage is. And for instance, I think we're all familiar with the classic, like, some of them were named Cobra, that are classic malt liquors, but a lot of, like, Mike's Hard Lemonade, if I'm not mistaken, is labeled malt liquor, but I'm not sure what that percentage is which classifies it as a malt liquor, and it's more on percentage than it is just on how it's made. So, I think I'm more a little, I'm a little, I'm not real comfortable just putting a number down, because I think it might unfairly limit sales of things that, you know, we might look at and say, I, you know, I think this is appropriate, but I think we all have in our mind what we would feel is inappropriate, and I'm still, I'm not sure how I would verbalize that.
Well, it seems then we're going back to the brand names.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? It's okay, you can sell anything but these brands, which the deputy city attorney recommended that we don't. So that's kind of the catch-22 with that one.
That's why I'm saying, I'm kind of uncomfortable on how to verbalize that. I mean, I would tend to lean more towards singles of any type, one, you know, because we all know there's so many different types of containers now, whether it's...
But we're talking about the beer-type beverage?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
So, no singles of any type in a beer-type beverage? Is that what you're suggesting?
That's what I would be more comfortable leaning towards right now, you know, because that would, there's, I think there's, most of the beer companies have singles out now that are designed to be singles, and they're somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 to 30 ounces. It's just a giant can.
To get around the limiting requirements of the planning commissions that have imposed limits on liquor stores in the past, that's the reason they're marketing those sizes. That's what they do.
But for the most part, I'm not that uncomfortable with most wine coolers that are sold in packages. There's probably some I haven't seen, and I probably would be, but at this point, I can't really...
Well, they don't sell Thunderbird in six-packs, I can tell you that.
They will.
Maybe they will, yeah. I don't think the typical purchaser of that product has sufficient resource to buy them in Sixers anyway, so, that's just, that's an editorial opinion.
And I think, for the most part, I'd be comfortable with wines if, I think, you've mentioned fortified wines.
Yes.
But I know there are fortified wines that would not, would not fall under your list, but they might not be a type that would be sold in this marketplace either.
Right.
Could we consider something else?
Sure.
I guess I was under the impression that there was, you know, time was of the essence, as we say, in this discussion, and Mr. Gutierrez just said that they're six, maybe six weeks away from opening, so it doesn't sound like we're putting, we're harming the situation by maybe stepping back a little bit and really giving this some consideration and waiting a month to approve it, and really looking at the facts.
I would agree with that, absolutely, because I see what Mr. Jacobs is saying, and I wholeheartedly agree, because I'm getting this visual of a brown paper bag with those singles being sold. I mean, if I could speak candidly.
Sure.
That's, so I absolutely agree with your point, and I think it warrants maybe revisiting later, letting us take a real hard look at it.
Go to a few liquor stores?
Do field trips? I don't know.
Well, I'm not sure that the singles is a question. I don't know that that's, that we're struggling with that. I think, I can't speak for anyone else, it's the product itself, not the container. Is that right?
Yeah. We need to know what we're talking about.
Well, and by delaying a month to the next hearing, that doesn't, it seems to me, it doesn't put a burden on the applicant to proceed with their design plans, nor their application to ABC for the use. I mean, it came to us initially as a type 21, which was a full liquor store type license. It's not posted yet, I mean, the site's not posted, at least it wasn't as of a couple days ago, so maybe it is, I don't know, I didn't notice it tonight. So if they want to post for beer and wine, they can do that. ABC will make their own determination. We make the final determination as to what restrictions we choose to place on it. So, and, you know, I hear what Mr. Ludiki has said, certainly, that, you know, we have a developer who is, you know, well-established in the community and has been very, has reacted very positively to the staff recommendations and commission city council's concerns about issues in the past, so, and he's been very successful, you know, an asset to the communities, certainly. So, you know, I don't see a 30-day delay or a next-meeting delay affecting us. It really only gives staff and the applicant about two weeks to put together and fine-tune this thing, two to three weeks before our next staff presentation, so it's not really a, it is a month in time, but it's, actual work time, it's like two, two to three weeks before it comes back to us in a staff report. So, I mean, if that's everybody's, I haven't heard from Mr. Burkey down there yet.
Couple of things I just wanted to ask Mr. Ludiki, if a delay of 30 days, if you saw any negative side to that in the applicant proceeding with his business?
No, I don't, and I, you know, you can ask the applicant, but I don't sense that that's going to be a make-or-break thing for them.
The other thing is, already in the alcohol conditions, number three, it does talk about in addition, no sales of separated packages of alcoholic beverages shall be allowed. So that's already taken care of in the conditions, correct?
Yes, in the sense that if something arrives at the store with the intent that it's to be sold as a single unit, it's, it would be a violation to essentially break it apart, for instance, a wine cooler or a six-pack of beer, and sell those containers individually. They couldn't do that. But it doesn't deal with the issue that I think was being raised over here, where 40-ounce can, 32-ounce can, 24-ounce can, it doesn't really address those, because those are generally not intended to be sold as part of a multi-pack unit.
With that information, my recommendation would be to postpone our decision for 30 days.
Sure. Seems like we have a consensus in that regard relative to continuing this matter, continuing this matter for 30, till the next regular meeting, but I believe we should give some definite guidelines to staff and the applicant who's here, so they understand our concerns. Obviously, we've talked about a lot of things from a lot of different perspectives, so the alcohol content of the beverages being sold is raised by some. The volume or quantity or size, I guess, of the container was a concern. Under the, if I'm doing this right, under the percentage of alcohol content, the fortified beverage, whether it's beer, malt liquor, or wine, was a concern raised. I don't believe anyone has said anything about hours of operation. Some concerns were raised about the delivery, circulation, loading, unloading, that type of thing, and parking, needs to be taken a look at. What else? And reconsideration... And reconsideration, reconsideration within six months of adoption, re-review by the commission, I guess was the, or staff. What did you say, Mr. Ludeke, staff or commission?
Actually, you could do it either way. We've got situations where staff reviews, and if we've identified a problem, we bring it to the commission. Or you could simply say, it's important enough to us, we'd, we'd like to see it as a commission, even if we haven't seen a problem that's identified.
It's your pleasure, you want to see it, or let staff look at it? Staff?
Yeah.
Staff's the answer.
Okay. What was the question?
Staff's the answer, you, and staff answered the... Yeah. I believe that was everything that's been discussed, I think. Does that give you sufficient direction? Is there anything else that you have in your notes, Mr. Ludeke, as a concern? Since this is a mixed-use, and the adjacent uses, distance between the adjacent uses are not a concern, under the current ordinance?
No, it wouldn't apply to them.
Because of, because it's of a mixed-use category?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I think we did talk about the, indirectly, the square footage of the, of the product being offered for sale, that we weren't dealing with large displays and end-cap promotions of beverage, alcohol beverage, as opposed to keep them in the cold case, right? You recall that, Mr. Ludeke? Okay. So, that's the consensus, so I would need a motion then to continue this matter to our next regular meeting, if that's your pleasure.
I make a motion that we continue conditional use permit number 0906 to our next regular meeting of, I believe, December 21st.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion, questions, comments, otherwise? All right. All those in favor of the continuance signify by saying aye, please?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, no? Passage unanimously, the matter's continued until the next regular meeting. All right. Director's announcements is next on our agenda.
Nothing under announcements, but some discussion on your commission agenda, as noted in your...
All right.
In your agenda.
Okay. Discussion on schedule of zoning consistency with general plan. That was what we brought up the last time, plus there's some other items. So, why don't you go ahead on that?
Okay, a brief rundown on where we believe we're at with the zoning consistency issue. There, there are a couple of things that we're doing. One is nearly complete, although it does require still some, some pretty close scrutiny and review. And that is the parcel-by-parcel zoning map, essentially, that is required in order to bring the city's zoning designations into compliance or consistency with the, with the adopted general plan. We are expecting at this point in time that we will be ready to go out to the public in some kind of a, of a review format. We're even considering perhaps kind of an open-house approach that we did for the general plan to deal with zone changes. By and large, most of the parcels within the city, we don't expect are going to experience changes in their zoning. However, as you'll recall, the general plan does designate some areas that, you know, property owners could essentially, or residents could view as, as pretty radical change. That includes the definition of some mixed-use areas and, and other things. The, the more difficult thing that we're, we're kind of struggling with right now is we are, we are going through and reviewing different iterations of, of a new mixed-use zone and those regulations. What we found is that, you know, people love the idea. We're not finding a lot of guidance out there at the professional level. There are some cities that have taken some of those steps, notably among them Colorado Springs and a couple in the Denver area. But we are plowing a lot of new ground on that, and that's going to take us a little bit of more time than, than I think we might have originally envisioned. But if, if we hold to the schedule that we believe we're on, we will go out to the public in early January. That, of course, would include information being transmitted to the commission for your review and perusal. Our goal would be that as a commission, you could hold your first public hearing on the, on the issue in your, at your regular February meeting. That would allow sufficient time for the people that are certainly interested in the community to look at it, as well as you. And then it's, quite frankly, a matter of, of how comfortable you are as a commission with the product and any changes or tweaks that you might want to see in it prior to making a, a formal recommendation on the map and any text changes, you know, primarily the mixed-use zone going forward to the council. We would not, at this point, recommend any other major changes into the zoning code. I mean, there's going to be plenty of time to follow up on that later. But we do need to get the zoning consistency done, and as a part of that, we do need to get a mixed-use zone classification written and adopted as a part of it, even if it requires some additional massaging later. But, you know, we have to have something, obviously, in place with that. So, that's probably a real long answer to your question, but I would expect as a commission, you're going to see material in early January, and your first real opportunity in a, a formal public hearing sense will, will probably be at your regular February meeting.
Do you think it'd be worthwhile to schedule a couple of successive meetings, just to give the public ample opportunity to give their input, similar to what we did on the general plan?
I think there may be some, some value to that. One of the things that, you know, we're certainly going to try to do is gauge the level of interest. As I said, when it, when it comes to zone changes that are essentially just bringing things into compliance, and I'm thinking something was residential and is now industrial, you know, I'm certain we have at least a couple examples of that. I, I'm not so sure you're going to get as much feedback or it's as worthwhile there, because you do have a requirement to match the general plan. However, for something like a mixed-use classification where we're kind of entering new territory, there may be some value in, in letting people review and, and perhaps have a, a couple of opportunities to look at that.
So, so you're talking about the meeting of February 15th?
Yeah, is that the one?
Well...
One of those had been moved?
It would be the 16th, I guess.
Yes.
Would be the 16th, and maybe then the 22nd or 23rd. Just schedule them, because you've got to give public notice, right?
Correct.
And then a potential adoption on the 15th of March. Potential recommendation...
Recommendation.
Recommendation to city council.
Right.
And then they'd take it up at their pleasure.
Yeah, I, I think that's a reasonable schedule. I, I think it makes sense, and, you know, we certainly want to make sure that we've caught everything.
I, I just would anticipate that, that one hearing would, may not be sufficient.
That's quite possible.
Given our history and, on the general plan.
Yeah.
All right. Let me just book it that way, and then, then give folks an opportunity to schedule their time.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that and plan, plan long-term for it.
All right, very good. Any questions from anyone on that? All right. Mr. Berkey and Ms. Smith had some issues they'd like to bring forward as well.
I think what we'd like to do is recommend that we readdress and look at the issue of paths in the Antelope Valley. We've talked about it as part of the general plan. And when the general plan process was moving forward, it was brought up that how do we put these paths in plan? How do we create a path plan? And then how do we make this happen? We didn't really come up with any great answers, and we have nothing today, that I know of, that would put paths into our community on an organized, structural, moving-forward-type basis. And so I don't know exactly the process, but I do know that I would like to look at the path system in the Antelope Valley and see what committees and what commissions need to get involved in putting together something that would move forward in our community and creating a great path system. It would create a great sense of community, and as I look at anything that we can do as a commission, I don't know of anything that could create as much sense of community as a great path system in the years to come. And so I put that on, on the floor as just something to discuss. Sandy, go ahead and add your thoughts.
Well, it was interesting to see that in the design guidelines, where they did address trail systems, and I think we all realize that probably with existing development, we can't implement trail systems after the facts. But, you know, as people continue to develop, we would like to see that actually become part, as they're recommending, of, of the developments. And, yeah, there's several issues, I think, that come into play when you talk about implementing a trail system, that we would probably need other departments to become involved in the discussion. So, I think we're probably, Brian, throwing it back to you to see if you have any thoughts. Perhaps a committee that we could put together. I, I certainly would like probably representation from the ADC committee, like some, perhaps Mr. Buchanan or Chairwoman Cook to be part of that committee. But I know that when you talk about implementing a trail system, that you're talking about other departments that need to be involved as well, not just planning.
Some form of funding, I suppose.
Yes. Actually, the, there's a couple of, of different places within adopted city plans, if, if you will, where, where the issue of, of an overall recreational trails or even transportation sale, ah, trails system is discussed. One is in the master plan of parks, parks and open space, recreation and open space. It was actually adopted ahead of the overall general plan, but one of the things that was brought up in that, and we got from the public outreach effort associated with that, was that people were interested in, you know, what could happen with a trail system, a, you know, I, I think people look at it primarily as a recreational kind of a thing, and that's, you know, why I think it logically came up in that, in that approach. We've also looked at it, as we pointed out in the general plan review, was, it's, it's been addressed to some extent in, in every general plan or mentioned, but it's never had anything exactly moved forward on it. I think the, the, the fact is that the city has done some things on individual projects. I mean, if you look at like the Amerigoza Pathway, in fact, it was mentioned in the newspaper story today, the city has, you know, long had a, at least a concept planned for that, and has pursued various funding sources, actually gotten some improvements done, including a, a trailhead and, and an idea of how we want that to go. The, the bike path and so forth along Sierra Highway is another example. But what I sense from Mr. Berkey's comments is that there's, there's no idea of how all that fits together, you know? How does one get from one to the other, and what's the idea? I, I think, you know, with whatever committees you form or whatever outreach you do, I, I think at the end of the day, it leads to ultimately doing the hard work of a master trails plan for the city. And it logically has to look at what are the regional trail systems in the area? It, it must, in fact, reach out and engage those constituencies, and there are some out there that are specifically devoted to recreational trails, and, and what can happen with those. I, I don't know that it would be as involved an effort as the general plan, but I, but it would be a, a bit of an effort, because you're going to look at trying to set, you know, what are the guidelines? What are the standards that we're going to look at? What are we going to try to achieve? And, you know, that hard question, where do we want to put this? And, and how are we going to, to fund and maintain it once we do that? But I don't know how you do that short of some kind of a comprehensive look at it through a planning effort, where people, you know, they may not agree with everything, but at least they come to some, agreement probably isn't the word, but at least they all concede that this is the approach that we ought to take and what we ought to do. The value of that, of course, is that if you then do get an individual development that's in an area, you have the legal mechanism in place to say, yeah, you need to dedicate this for this trail, because this is part of our overall plan. You know, I think I, I may have mentioned to one of our, one of our citizens who actually is also was on the general plan citizens advisory committee, he said, well, is anything going on with that anywhere? I said, oh, yeah, we've got some individual projects that when development was moving pretty well, out in the, what, 45th, 40th to I, you know, area, where, where we actually had kind of come to, to a way that we were looking at connecting a trail system. We have another developer that we're working with right now in the southwest area of the city, where, where they're looking at how to connect a trail. But, but once again, we're looking at individual projects, trying to, trying to, you know, create something that we don't know what the other part of it is yet. So I, I think short of a, a comprehensive planning effort, I, I'm not sure we're going to get the results we want. And granted, that's costly, and it does take some time. Staff, who has become pretty good at this, to some extent, has been looking at, at funding, potential funding sources, grant opportunities. It's amazing, some of the stuff that's out there, if you simply look. One other aspect of this, and, and I don't know that people think about it directly, but I, Carlisle Workman may want to address it to a little bit, the city has been somewhat more proactive on the bicycle side of things, and, and I don't know if you'd like to, to kind of indicate some of the things that we do have going on in that regard, but clearly that also has to tie into this overall thought.
Just please.
I know that our traffic division has been working on a, kind of a master plan of bike trails, and, and we have received some funding for expanding a bike trail on Sierra Highway as part of a call for projects. But again, I, I agree with Brian, that this would kind of dovetail into a master plan of trails. You could have bike trails, you can have pedestrian trails. I think it'd just be taking what's kind of been started and building on that from a more comprehensive standpoint.
And again, as I mentioned, I don't think it's something that we do, that we can do in existing developments, residential developments. I mean, they're established, they are what they are, and I don't think you can just drop a path system in the middle of these developments. What we're talking about is future, and you mentioned that it's been addressed for many years. And, and I think the question, the discussion we've had is, okay, so when do we finally decide, or when does the city or whoever finally decide that we're going to kind of take this on? Because it seems to me that there's a lot of importance now being placed on architecture or design, aesthetics, kind of changing the, the feeling of, of the city and, and how we're designing things. And, and I think maybe now's the time. I know that it's not our, under our purview to order staff to, to start, you know, developing a, a master plan, but I think our question is, when can we sit down, perhaps, and just have the discussion as to what the next steps would be? Should we want to pursue undertaking that, or recommending that that be undertaken?
Well, simply between staff and the commission, that can be done, you know, easily tied with one of your, your normal study sessions, as long as, you know, people are saying, hey, we're, we're willing to stay an extra hour and, and talk about this. I think certainly, you know, some things to think about, I'm not saying you need to do that, do it this way. But, you know, you, you as a commission certainly have the ability to send recommendations forward to the city council and say, you know, as you consider your capital programs, as you consider your budget for the next fiscal year, we, we think that with all of these other things that are happening with design, this is something important, and maybe it can't be funded this year, or maybe it needs to be re... important and maybe it can't be funded this year or maybe it needs to be relying on grant funding, but at least it kind of starts to get some, some notice and some priority. Because I think, you know, you know, we talked a little bit earlier about, about public finance and the demands on public dollars. It's very easy, you know, you need to make a sheriff's contract? Yeah, if I'm a council member, I certainly make that vote. But you know, trying to remember about some of the other quality things that make a good community too, you know, requires keeping that in front of you. And I would tell you that when it comes to even existing approved development, not maybe something that's already built, but you know, one of the things that I think's been very encouraging is that our public works staff has taken a real hard look at what do we need realistically in terms of lane amounts and other things in some of these areas. And I will tell you, there may be opportunities to do some, some trails that are, that are, you know, maybe we didn't think were there. So, so I wouldn't necessarily dismiss it out of hand, even for, for areas where you have approvals in place.
Well, historically, we've made modifications and added conditions to improve maps as a routine matter based on policy changes and ordinances and such, right?
Yeah, very true.
And I think it goes a little further too. I mean, as far as, you know, we've got approved developments that haven't, haven't been...
Haven't moved.
Haven't moved, but when you go back and you say that you, you know, this is a new requirement that you need to have these paths, that does affect the usable land too for the developers. So I think it just goes deeper and deeper. And I think what, what we're asking is, is that we just have the discussion and bring the right people in to have that discussion and maybe educate us further and, and kind of let us know the options instead of keeping everyone here all night tonight. Can we perhaps talk about that as a commission in the future, having a...
Well, certainly from a staff level, we can identify the key people within city staff that would, would have input into this. And if we can identify a study session that, you know, we're willing to do this, you know, we can arrange to have those people present. And, and you know, I think it would be good to hear from the perspective of the Parks Recreation and Arts Director or, you know, city administration as to how, as to how they view these things.
Well, our study sessions are public as well, so improperly noticed. So I, I think everyone would agree then it sounds to me like you've been given a direction to come back to us with information related to the trail issue and certainly in conjunction with the adopted architecture and design guidelines, so I mean, and general plans. So I don't think we're out of our purview at all to address these issues and ultimately make recommendations. I mean, we can't, we can't capitalize anything in that.
Sure.
So, it's an interesting comment that, that you made regarding community facilities districts. I thought that was, I've had certainly some experience in establishing community facilities districts and managing them for other agencies. And I must say, as long, and you did address the issue as it relates to the financial viability of, of projects and prevailing wage comes to mind as it relates to the cost of development at all levels, not just public works. It would be, the entire project would be in a prevailing wage category. Seems to work for public agencies pretty well, but the private sector, as near as I can recall, maybe the rules have changed, maybe the laws have changed, but they tend to resist a bit because the, the economics aren't necessarily there to, the economic viability, I should say. But you know, certainly worth exploring and particularly in these limiting times. I mean, I certainly could see a downtown, the downtown specific plan being overlaid with a community facilities district because you've got a controlled marketplace, you really do. So maybe that's a start, maybe that's the place to begin, I don't know. But it would be worth the exercise, wouldn't it? Because we've still got, we've got a lot to do downtown.
Sure.
All right, anything more on trails or anything?
Then I, I take it from the comments, it would be appropriate to put it on our agenda for study session in December if we all agreed, is that correct, Brian?
Let me, let me see what the availability of some of those key staff would be. I would say if not in December, in January certainly, you know, and make sure those people have enough lead time to, you know, come and be, and be ready. But I'll, I'll check that this week and let you guys know so that you can plan accordingly.
Personally, I'd love to see the opportunity to talk to other planners in other communities that have done what we're trying to do, to mastermind, not try to reinvent the wheel, see what they, they took and then maybe put together a group to study grants and funding possibilities for a trail system, those types of things, so we can hit it at all sides. I see this thing as kind of like eating an elephant, you know, you can come by and take a bite out of it once a week, or you can get a group together and get some forks and knives and get that thing taken care of. So I'd love to have this group take a big bite out of this elephant.
As Dickens said, I think Marcus is willing. At any rate, the other issue that I'd like to bring up, and Mr. Lutick and I have had discussions and communications on this, which I did not share with the members, however, it had to do, it has to do with the existing advertising signage within our community. As I drive through the community and, in the daytime and in the evening, I notice that there's a considerable, in my view, negative impact on our environment as it relates to some of the types of signage that has been allowed to exist in our community. I'm assuming that when a sign is a merchant or whomever it may be, it doesn't necessarily have to be a commercial merchant, anyone who installs a sign that is not in conformance with the ordinances within our city. About the only time anything is ever done about it is if a complaint is filed and then code enforcement gets involved. Code enforcement is not out actively soliciting and reviewing nonconformance unless it's so blatant that they can't but stumble over it. That's my expectation is how it works around here. So without maybe taking the time out of all of our schedules, if we see what we would consider as a potential nonconformance sign, I'd like, I'd like us as a commission to, at one of our study sessions, to review the policies and ordinances as it relates to sign impacts and installation and approval process within our community. And just see if, if what we're viewing out on, on the streets is what we want in our community. Frankly, it's just my opinion, but there are certain areas within our community that give me the impression of a third world country. By the way, the facades of some of our buildings exist and the signs and the way the merchants tend to advertise or junk up their, their facades. And you know, it needs to be addressed and, and that's only, only my point of view, it's my limited point of view maybe, but you know, if I can get concurrence from the members, I think it's something that, you know, I don't want to be the sign police, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to suggest to you that a new shopping center at the northwest corner of Avenue M and 10th Street West has pinnants out there that they're not supposed to have, that they've got banners and, and all their windows covered with signs. I mean, I can tell you, that doesn't conform to the ordinance, we all know that. And the bootleg sign on the, you know, the truck body parked out in somebody's parking lot directing someone to a carpet store or, you know, the, the, I don't know what you call them, the salon, the nail salon vendor who has, who's bootlegged a sign on some for lease sign directing the clientele to their place of business or the, or the applicant that we had here tonight that has 90% of the windows covered with signage, those kinds of things. I mean, you know, I don't want to go out, I don't have the time to go out and do that, I suppose, but it just junks up our community. And we spend a lot of time, a lot of effort with new developments trying to turn them into very nice developments that are attractive and appealing to the eye, but yet in other parts of our community, we've just got, the only word that comes to my mind is junk and, and it needs to be addressed and I'm not sure how we do it, other than become the sign police, and I don't particularly want to do that personally. So, so that's my spiel for the evening. So what do you think about that, Mr. Lutick?
Well, we can certainly, you know, give you kind of a primer on what the current city's regulations on signage are. I will tell you that outside of new commercial development or specific plans that have been adopted subsequent, most of the city's sign regulations, what would you say Sylvia, are probably 20, 15 to 20 years old? Would you, the industrial zones were adopted in 93, somewhere in there? And most of the commercial zones, although they were updated at times, I think most of them were placed in their current form in 1987, as I recall. So, so we can, yeah, I can recall a long way back, that's a scary thing. But yeah, I, I think probably the first step is to kind of describe what's allowed, you know, what's the process. There are certainly some legal issues also with signage because it, at times crosses into First Amendment issues. And then there are, you know, things that certainly predate even the city that are out there and, you know, in some cases, we've had some success and in some cases, I would say probably some abysmal failure, so.
But there's, there's nothing that would prevent the commission from reviewing the ordinances, regulations, policies and coming up with revisions, for instance, for instance, a, a business goes out of business and they're vacant for a period of time and within that period of time, a new ordinance might say that, that the sign must be removed within a certain period of time and replaced with a more modern, with the new tenant or new owner within a certain period of time. There's nothing that would prevent us from adopting an ordinance like that, would there be?
Well, or as a city from adopting such a thing?
Yes.
No, I mean, as long as you give reasonable...
Say we, it's the royal we.
Oh, okay. As long as we, you know, provide people adequate time and, and amortize out certain things.
Yeah, for instance, or for instance, what I call a can sign or a metal sign with a plastic insert that, you know, that they've all been grandfathered in or allowed to continue, you know, maybe you put a moratorium on, not a moratorium, but a, a regulation that, you know, in five years or seven years, they have to recycle them and come up with a more modern design, a more pleasing design. I mean, we can, we can recommend things like that.
Certainly.
Okay. So that's where I'm coming from. So, all right, very good. Well, you can take a look at our schedule and yours and maybe get back to us with, that would certainly take an hour, I would think, reviewing those regulations with us.
Oh yeah, to, to be thorough about it, yes.
All right. Okay, anything else from the members before we...
Only comment I would have is I appreciate you bringing that up. I agree with you, there, there are places in our, in our valley, in our city that are an eyesore, to say the least, and I'd love to review those ordinances, find out about it. The other thing is, it's always good to come with an idea of how we go about combating these issues and I don't know that, that the city's going to have the resources to go after them, so it is going to take, I think, some, some involvement on our part and our fellow citizens to snap a picture with our cell phone. I don't think that's illegal right now, right? You can't talk on them, but you can take a picture while, while you're driving. Have to review that ordinance too.
That's interesting.
But at any rate, to be involved in the process, so the sooner the better on that.
And if, you know, when you're bored and you, and you want to access the, all the, all the ordinances of the city of Lancaster or most any other city and most any other community in the country, you can access them online through the city website. So all the ordinances related to signage and everything else we talk about is, is there, so. However, the policies and procedures and regulations that staff administers is, is not there, so. All right, well, we appreciate you looking into that for us, Mr. Lutick. All right, anything further from the members? You ready, you're, you're ready to call it an evening? This is one of, okay, then. The last item on our agenda is public business from the floor, non-agendized items. This portion of the agenda allows an individual the opportunity to address the commission on any subject regarding city business under state legislation. No action can be taken on non-agenda items. Members of the public should be aware of this when addressing the commission regarding items not specifically referenced on the agenda. If you please complete a speaker's card and for the recording secretary, individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Do you have any speakers?
Yes, I have one, Mr. Chairman, Jason Zink.
Oh, Mr. Zink, all right. Good evening and welcome, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members, commission. Basically, I came here because I was just turned on this, this set tonight and I saw the, the convenience store in Aubrey Court and I saw you guys trying to, you know, talk about alcohol sales and restrict it and stuff like that. We've been talking about it for like 20 years around here and I really do believe that the alcohol thing is really an, there's really no fear, you guys make more fear to it than it really is. I mean, if you take Challenger and Avenue K, you have two elementary schools, Jack Northrop, one of the best elementary schools out here, but yet you have Viata, two liquor stores, Tokyo Steakhouse, Rico's, or the Mexican place and Vince's Pasta and Pizza and the Shell gas station. So alcohol, is there a real problem there? There was a weirdo out there that pulled his pants down, but it wasn't because of alcohol, he smoked too many cigarettes because he was mentally ill. So I just think that when you're trying to limit stuff, you're also limiting people's constitutional rights. Those people are on fixed incomes and by making, those alcohols are cheaper, so it makes it more affordable to those people. My favorite drink, believe it or not, and I can drink anything, is a Mad Dog 2020 Banana Red, but only the flavor of Banana Red. The others, don't drink them, they're sickening. But I just think that you guys are making, I understand what you're trying to do, trying to make stuff, but I think that's old ideas and old thoughts and I think society's come up a bit. And if, you know, if you have low income people and you don't provide jobs for them and stuff like that, that's what's going to happen. But hopefully Lancaster doesn't go in that direction. The other thing is, the information on, when I watch you guys, I'd love for you guys to have something at the bottom of the screen like I recommended before, so I could see where you guys are and what you're talking about and stuff like that, instead of just a screen of people, like it's like watching a home video, you know, of your family. The other thing is the real estate signs. One eyesore I think is real estate signs on existing commercial centers like Roseanne Markovitz, her, her signs are all over the place. It just makes the area look low, I mean, like we're hurting. Sign ordinances like you guys talked about, look, don't go over too far, over regulate, just like Palmdale did with their big signs made all those stores, restaurants, put their signs down and the gas stations, they lost a million dollars in sales tax revenue because of that. They lost Denny's, Baker Square, Carols, those gas stations probably went down 40%. They lost Denny's, Baker Square, Carols, those gas stations probably went down 40% because what do travelers do? They just drive on by. Lancaster was smart, they created a center and put all those high signs and stuff like that. So, don't overregulate. The other thing was parking. That's probably one of the worst projects is on M and 10th Street West, that parking lot with all the...
Freddie, your time is expired, Mr. Zink. Thank you for your comments.
It's just, we need to really look at things and like, your multi-use designs, they need to...
Thank you for your comments.
Take that into consideration, the parking, as it came up today.
Thank you, your time is expired, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any other speakers, Mr. Ludke?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then. Anything further from the members? All right. Then we stand adjourned to the Monday, December 14th at 5:30 PM in the planning large conference room here at City Hall. Thank you all.